If we can, can we scratch the July portion? We will be just approving the June financial report at this time. And so, does anybody else have any other amendments or adjustments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we have a lot of new staff members that we would like to recognize today.
We do. We have a packed house at Clinton City School Board today. Normally, guys, we have about three people in the audience. And so, we're super excited that you are here to join us today. But this is always one of my favorite board meetings, just because I always come to you and say that we have found some quality candidates to come join us at Clinton City Schools. But I will tell you that this, this summer, we truly have, we have captured some really quality people to come and join us at Clinton City Schools. And so, I know that you all are exhausted from your first full week of school. So what we will do is we will announce you all. And then, we will gather, we normally gather on the front steps of the, of the city hall. We are not going to do that tonight because we don't want your hair looking like Scott Ray's. And so, what we will do is we will gather up here. And normally, we have you come up and the school board members will shake your hand and welcome you to Clinton City Schools. But after we introduce anybody, we're going to give you a great big air hug, just because we don't need anybody getting COVID at the beginning of the year. So we'll refrain from our hand shaking. But just know that they are gonna, yeah, ET said about that. Just know that we are, we are welcoming you. For those that we're getting ready to introduce, I do want you to know that you have entered something very, very special. And a lot of people do not realize how special Clinton City Schools is unless you have worked for another school district or if you have worked for another organization outside of the school district. This is just a really tight-knit community. It's a school that offers, as you know, high expectations with an abundance of support. The magic happens in your classroom. The magic happens with what you do with kids. But it could not happen if you did not have the support of these six members right here that put your needs and kids' needs first every single meeting and every single day. So they, they, they are elected officials, but they actually do this job for free. It is not a paid position. So they do it because they are passionate about Clinton City Schools. And that is important. They also, one of the things that you don't find in many districts is they are not advocating for their district in which they serve. They don't show preference over one school over another. They truly are advocating for all three Clinton City Schools. And you will see them make decisions. If, if one school is getting it, all three schools are getting it. So you do not see any sort, we are all on one page. But so many of the policies and procedures that they create allow you to do your job. And they are very committed to protecting your, your power, your energy into just working magic with children. And so, you are going to find that they are very, very supportive of you. They are very supportive of teachers. I will say they're very supportive of central office and principals and admins and me. They trust us, that we know our kids and that, and that we're going to do a good job. And so, they are one of the keys to the success of Clinton City Schools. And you don't ever come to a school board meeting that you do not hear them praising the work that you do. You don't ever, I never bring them anything to approve that they do not look at it through the eyes of a teacher. And I think that is one of the things that makes Clinton City Schools so special. So I'm going to introduce you to them first, and then, I'm going to introduce them to you. So we'll start over here on the side, but this is David Queener. And David Queener, he actually has a granddaughter that attends Clinton Elementary School. But he had a long-time career in the Clinton Police Department as a detective and several other roles. He brings a really, really good perspective on school safety, a parental perspective from being a grandparent. And he's also a very, very active community member. And so, he, he is very, very, he is very, very much an advocate for teacher races and for supporting teachers. So we, he is a valued member. Next, we have Lori Wilson. Lori Wilson joined us in January of this year. So she is a new school board member, but both of her children went through Clinton City Schools. She is a very large advocate for the city of Clinton and the schools, all three Clinton, all three Clinton Schools, plus Clinton Middle and Clinton High. She is one of the founders of an organization called Clinton Strong. And if you don't follow that on Facebook, that is a great web, Facebook page to follow that is truly, she is committed to supporting the good work that is happening in all the schools that feed into all of the Clinton Schools. So she is, she is near and dear to our hearts, and we're glad that she's part of the school board. Next, we have Dr. Tim Bible. And Tim Bible has been on the, the board for one or two years, just a few years. But he is a local dentist in town. His office is located right down the street. And he actually, all of, both of his girls went through Clinton City Schools. And his wife actually teach, teaches at Clinton Elementary. So if you're at Clinton Elementary, his better half is Vicki Bible. And, but he is a huge supporter of our school system and has been for such a long time and brings a great perspective of just the politics and the things that play into education and protecting you all from, I guess, the ugly side. But he definitely looks at things through teacher and student eyes and is a good advocate for us. So he's a wonderful board member as well. Then moving on down our, down the road, we have Merle Price. Merle Price is one of us. She, she did her whole career, almost her whole career, in Clinton City Schools as a teacher. And then, she was a principal for many years at North Clinton Elementary. She is most well-known for raising Jamie Jordan and Monica Rael. And so, that is her claim to fame, is that she actually hired them and helped raise them. And so, you see what a great administrator is, she is, because she created a nice pipeline for leaders for Clinton City Schools. But she does a great job of looking at things through an administrative standpoint. She gets the work that we do because she lived the work that we do. And if you ever truly just want to laugh and hear funny stories, you need to just sit down and let her tell some North Clinton stories from her time of being a principal. And she definitely can keep you on your toes with those. Then next, we have Joey Smith. And Joey Smith is a local realtor with Sellers Realty in Clinton. And he has two children that attend Clinton Elementary. He's very active in his church, at the Church of Christ. And he is also the board chair of the Anderson County Chamber of Commerce. And so, he is very, very active in the community, but also brings a great parental perspective. And he just is also, he serves on several boards and the historic downtown merchant historic committee, that I know I didn't get that correct. But he's been instrumental in a walking historic tour that has come. So, missing on the end is Curtis Isabel. And he has also been a board member for many years. He has had two boys come through Clinton Elementary School. He has one in sixth grade. Right now, the other has moved on to middle, or high school now. He's a local lawyer in town, and his office is also located just right down the street. But he is a huge supporter of Clinton Elementary School. And he just brings a great legal perspective to our team. And so, as you can see, the group is very diverse, and they all bring different backgrounds and interests. But their common goal is that they love the kids of Clinton City Schools. So this is your school board. And so, now I will introduce you all to the new people that we have and hope that I don't leave anyone out. As you all know, I am dealing with a really severe dry eye situation right now. So the paper's looking really fuzzy. So if I miss somebody, principals, please stand up and yell because I don't want to, don't want to miss anybody. But we're going to start with South Clinton Elementary. So I'm just going to say your name and introduce you. If you will just stand up and, and wave to them, and then, you can just sit back down. So we'll start with Courtney Case. So Courtney Case is with us this year as a first-grade teacher at South Clinton Elementary. She did an interim with us when Tammy Pack retired last year in fourth grade. She filled in for us for half a year, and so, we were able to slide her into that first-grade position. We also have Augustus Enz Ridley. And so, Augusta is with us in sixth grade at South Clinton. She actually did Brandy Beauches's interim position when she was out on maternity leave last year. She also has her art certification, and so, she is going to be teaching sixth-grade math and science at South Clinton Elementary. We have Wanda Holsey with us today. And so, Wanda is a new, she was a, she's a teaching assistant at South Clinton. She started with us last year as a substitute. And when we had a teaching assistant position, Leanne Bonesteal, I think Wanda was the first person that Leanne called. She was just excited to, and I will tell you a story about Wanda. She was getting ready to, she just jumps in and does anything. And she happened to ask a teacher what needed to be done, and a teacher needed a board painted in her room. And so, Wanda was going to jump in and do that, but she didn't want to get paint on her clothes. So she got creative, and I walk in, and all of a sudden, Wanda's wearing a garbage bag. So she had turned a, she had turned a garbage bag into a paint smock. So I thought, you're going to fit in just fine. If you know how to do that, you're going to fit into our elementary world just fine. And then, finally, at South Clinton, we have Melissa Jay. And Melissa Jay is coming to us, and she's going to be one of the special ed teachers at South Clinton Elementary. We'll have two, two there. So she'll be doing resource and CDC. So Leanne, did I get all of your sweet new ones? That's everybody? Okay. So those are our South Clinton crew. Then our North Clinton crew, we have Sadie Izzo. And so, and Baby Georgia. Baby Georgia's in the background. And so, Sadie has come to us from Knox County Schools where she taught at Northwest Middle, but she is going to be the permanent fourth-grade teacher at North Clinton. Then we also have Larissa Fulford. Larissa also comes to us from Knox County via California. And so, she, she lives in the community in Claxton area. And so, she is just going to be a great addition in third grade at Clinton Elementary. And then, in second grade, we have Courtney Haygood. And Courtney Haygood was with us most of the year last year, doing several interim positions. She definitely has a love of primary grades. So when the second-grade position opened, we knew she would be a good fit there. Next, we have Jan Kirkpatrick. And many of you all will realize, Jan, she's a familiar face in Clinton, but she's also one of our mamas at Clinton Elementary School. But knowing that substitutes continue to be an issue for us and that we're continuing to have to pull TAs to cover classrooms, which impacts intervention, and Clinton Elementary being our largest school, we actually have hired her as a full-time substitute this year. And she's going to be the first to go into a room in an effort to try to keep us from pulling as many TAs. We also have, not with us today, Candace Moore. But we, we hired her in the middle of the year last year when our librarian went out on maternity leave. But she is back with us as a special ed TA this year, but she was unable to attend. Then we have Amy Tomlinson. I, I like totally went straight to North Clinton, to Clinton Elementary. I'm so sorry. I told you I cannot see. So we're, we're at Clinton Elementary now, in case y'all didn't follow my, my frame here. So Amy Tomlinson, she actually is coming to us from Lake City. She is going to be our Clinton Elementary School librarian. You may know her mother-in-law, Sandy Tomlinson, who was, had a long-time career in Clinton City Schools. But she is going to be a welcomed addition in library. Then we also have Sarah Vick. And Sarah Vick is a Clinton girl. And so, she actually went to teach in Putnam County for a couple of years, and she just was ready to come back home, and we were ready to embrace her. So she is coming and will be fifth-grade math and science at Clinton Elementary. So I did skip sweet Cameron Burrows when I just went right over to Clinton Elementary School. So Cameron Burrows is with us. Cameron is going to be in fourth grade at Clinton Elementary School. And she did her, her student teaching in the fourth grade at South Clinton last year under Brandy Beauches. And so, she had some fourth-grade experience. And so, while we have moved two of our fourth-grade teachers into an all-core position, she is going to fill in one of those fourth-grade classrooms for us. So since I conveniently introduced Sadie and left North Clinton, Jenna, did I get all of your Clinton Elementary people?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Then we're going to finish up.
Okay. Never mind. We're going to finish up, Lori, because we have two more more.
Okay. Oh, we, we do. We sure do. And I probably put them, oh, yeah. No, no, I've still got North. So we got Sadie at North. And we also have Shannon Stukesbury. So Shannon Stukesbury is our new art teacher at North Clinton and South Clinton. She is a fresh grad from Carson Newman College, which is my alumni. So we're super excited about that. But she's joining us in North and South. Then we have Abby Warren, who is with us at North Clinton in first grade. This was the first-grade classroom that we had to add because enrollment at North Clinton has skyrocketed this year. So we have two kindergarten classrooms and two first-grade classrooms. And then, we have Meredith Wilken. And she is with us. We captured her through our kindergarten, pre-K boost camp that we did this year, where we invited upcoming kindergarteners, and we partnered with UT and had some UT interns come and help us with that program. And so, she came and helped us with that program. We fell in love with her. She fell in love with us. And so, now she is going to be a teaching assistant in a special ed room in North Clinton. And then, we have Megan Wade. And so, there's sweet Megan. And she gets the award, I think, for working the most hours on the weekend to get a room ready prior to school starting. But Megan comes to us, and she is going to be teaching second grade at North Clinton Elementary. So Monica is not with us today because she is sick. But Jamie, did I hit all of North Clinton? Is anybody out there that I just have fuzzy eyes and cannot see? Did we hit everybody? Okay. So welcome, welcome. The school board is going to give you a great big wave and virtual hug and clap.
And welcome to Clinton City Schools. We are so honored that you chose us to, to come and help us out. We greatly appreciate you coming by, and we welcome you with open arms. If there's anything you need, don't hesitate to, to contact us or central office or anybody. If there's anything we can do to help, that's what we're here for.
All right. So now is the fun time, where Danny Goleins is going to use his photography skills to very nicely center you under our great seal in height order, Danny, with the Hyatt, with the tallest in the middle and then, and with symmetry going down. But no, if you all will please just come and if you can, some of you stand on the top of the rail, and some of you stand kind of on the ramp, and we're going to get a quick picture with you. Huh? I, I think this is a great time for your leadership skills to come out, Danny. Yeah. Y'all come stand in the back. Let's stand in the back.
Can we cuddle underneath? What do you want us to do? Sit. Oh. All right. So we count to three. You ready? One, two. Wait, what comes after two? One, two, I tricked you, three. All right.
You got it?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Don't ever just take one of those three girls in the picture.
All right, we're good.
Now, all of you all, before you leave, I have to show you something. I have to appreciate.
What are you saying?
To one of us who works for Clinton.
Great for me.
But right here in our gray shirt is ET Stamen. If you do not know ET Stamen, you probably saw him on our first staff meeting of the, of the day. But ET is one of our current city council members, but he joined us about five years ago, and we had no extracurricular activities whatsoever in Clinton City Schools. And he single-handedly came to me one day, and he was like, I need you to trust me, but we'll start basketball. And I was like, no, we're not. And before you know it, within five years, now we offer basketball cheering, dance, archery, color guards, swimming, track, cross-country, bowling, tennis, tennis, uke-lary, or one on the band. And all of that guys started with this lead man right here. And he is here and dear to our hearts. If you were at North Clinton, North Clinton, you'd have his offices to try. And I'll touch it because he's coming back to you. But anyway, I just wanted you to see him because he is part of us, and he is a big part of our belief that we are well-rounded, he has been playing in these schools. All right. And you will go home and go there.
No, I'm through with that. Hopefully, thank God. I hope I don't have to have that done no more. I'm almost there.
Bye-bye, Baby Georgia. She ran into Chelsea issues and had to resign. She did not want to leave. We're going to wrap her up.
Calm down.
We're excited, too.
All right. We'll move along. Next item up on our agenda is approval of our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our June financial report with Mr. Ray.
Everybody should have a dry copy, I hope, of the June 30th, 2022 financial statements for the General Purpose School Fund, Federal Projects Fund, and the School Nutrition Program Fund. Draw attention to the second page of the General Purpose Fund. Second column at the bottom, we have a deficit for the year approximately $518,000. And again, this is, these are not audited financial statements. So there could be some, some slight adjustments up or down. But in all material respects, I think what's presented to you is accurate. Given that we spent $1.5 million on South Clinton's addition, I'm not concerned about a deficit. Remember, we paid cash for that, so we've not borrowed any money. That's probably the only significant thing I can point out to you on the General Purpose School Fund financial statement. Any questions on that? Everything else is kind of fine.
The ESAR money, just to kind of piggyback, the, the ESAR money is doing exactly what we intended for it to do. So we moved those salaries into ESAR-free GP funds to pay for South Clinton. And so, even though there is a slight deficit this year, because we've moved those salaries into ESAR for this year, we're going to recoup that as this year, as this year goes on.
I try to address the balance sheet every once in a while. We tend to overlook that. So the balance sheet as of June 30th, 2022, we have about $5.7 million in cash or cash equivalents. $3.3 million is held with the city in an interest-bearing account. That's approved by the state comptroller. So it's not getting traded in a merit trade or anything. We do have a significant amount of payables. We have accounts payable that is related to the South Clinton Elementary project of $690,000 total payables. $500,000 is just payable to the contractor for South Clinton. So if you did a cash flow, and we have almost $650,000 in accrued payroll, cash flow statement, we'd probably be sitting at about $3 million in cash that's available in the next 90 days. So we're in good position with cash flow. I'm not concerned about that. Anytime you have a deficit on your income statement, you really just need to examine your balance sheet. We've done that. We're in good shape. We started the year with a $5.8 million fund balance. And so, we should end the year at $5.3.
Still in great shape.
Federal Projects Fund. Again, those are all reimbursement grants. The left column is what's budgeted. That's the total grant that remains as of the beginning of the year generally. What is spent is what has been approved to be spent by the Tennessee Department of Ed. And you can see that we've spent $1.6 million in federal grants, and we will receive $1.6 million in money from Tennessee Department of Ed. Right now, we're a little slow on the reimbursement process. We're about 45 to 60 days behind. That's my fault. But we are not in a cash flow problem area. So usually, I try to keep it within 30 days. But I'm working on it. So not a problem. Cafeteria Fund. We ended the year with a $167,000 surplus. To reference, last year, I think we ended the year with approximately a $20,000 surplus. The USDA increased their reimbursement rates. But, and that's the main reason that, the main driver for that increase in a surplus. However, just remember, a dishwashing machine is $35,000 to $40,000. A walk-in cooler, $35,000 to $40,000. And all of our dish machines at all of our schools, I believe, are 15 to 20 years old. So that's probably next on our list at some point. So it is important for us to build that cafeteria fund balance up so we can replace equipment at the appropriate time, rather than just making repairs that are putting money into a bad piece of equipment because we don't have the money. Freeze us up to do what we need to do, when we need to do it. Any questions on the financial statements?
I think the difference with cafeteria is I signed a check for Scott the other day where the, was the cooling unit had gone out, and it was like between $4,000 and $5,000 just for that repair. So that's the goal, is to have that fund balance, to be able to handle those repairs without having to pull from GP funds. But we also, this year, the biggest difference is we, the USDA is not doing universal free and free breakfast and lunch. And so, we are actively encouraging all parents to fill out the free and reduced lunch form because many qualify and don't realize that they qualify. And so, Scott and Harper and Laura Roberts are working diligently to encourage as many people as possible to fill those out so that we can feed as many kids for free as possible.
All right. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our financial report for the month of June. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Lori Wilson?
Yes.
Sam Popple?
Yes.
Marika?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have a Cook's Mechanical Service contract to approve.
That's just a, a new contract. They do preventative maintenance on our walk-in coolers and freezers. Because we don't have a, a staff that are able to maintain those items, we need to pay somebody to do that. And the age of the equipment, still useful life left, but we need to probably start maintaining it better. So they also give us a reduced rate for service and 24 access, 24-hour access to service, which if you have a cooler or freezer, you need.
Okay. Any further questions or comments regarding the mechanical services contract? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
David Queener?
Yes.
Lori Wilson?
Yes.
Sam Popple?
Yes.
Merle Price?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, we have a whole slew of policy amendments that I guess the legislature's been very active. And so, we'll need to approve these on both first and second reading. And we should be able to do that, Kelly, as a group, as a whole.
You can. A couple, just. You can. A couple just of things just to bring to your attention. The majority of them, as you can see, yes, it was a very busy legislative session. Two that I do want to point out specifically to you is that we do have a new policy, which is library materials. And that was a big source of debate and conversation with the General Assembly this year. Not really as much on an elementary level, but some parents have found some textbooks in high schools that they feel are inappropriate for high schools, which has led to a debate of, you know, do we have something consistent in state law of how stakeholders can ask for a review process if they feel like something in the library is inappropriate for that age level and audience of students. And so we basically have just adopted the TSBA recommended policy because we know it follows state law. Part of that is that the libraries now have to post all of their books online in a web-based database for parents to view. That was really easy for us to do because our library current system that we have already keeps all of that. And so we have already posted all of that on the school's websites for parents to view. The policy just talks about if there was a review requested, that we would form a committee and how we would go about determining if that book was going to be removed from the library or kept. They're again, not really highly used in an elementary setting, usually more for middle school and high schools. So that is a new policy. Then also just wanted to draw your attention to the transfers within system policy, 6.206. They are using the form, everybody has their own vocabulary within districts. We have two different types of, well, we have three different types of students. You've got your zone students. We in Clinton City call transfers, those are out-of-cities students who have requested to come to the city. Those are transfers. We also have something that's called zone exceptions. Zone exceptions are if you are a, you're zoned Clinton Elementary, but your parents want you to attend South Clinton Elementary because that's where grandmother lives and the transportation home is going to be easier. Those are zone exceptions. So what is confusing about this policy is state law is calling a transfer what we call zone exception. And so they're saying, and what, where they're, this is really, the origin of this came from once again, Metro Nashville and Shelby, where they're trying to basically create open enrollment within a district to where if you are in one of those counties in a failing school, you have the, they want you to have the right to go to any school in that county that you want to, that might be performing better. Well, at Clinton City, we're obviously unique. We have always tried to take care of our city residents first, and if they needed to go to an additional school for a valid reason and their attendance behavior and parental support was satisfactory, then we always have made that happen. So it's not that we will change anything about that process, but the way that we do it now is going to need to be separated from the actual transfer process for out-of-city. So what you'll see us do next year is probably a month or a month and a half before our transfer period opens for out-of-city students. We will have a 30-day window where any existing city student wants to fill out a zone exception, they will have the right to do that first. Really, that doesn't matter because we always take care of them first before we do transfers anyway, but to be in compliance with this law, we'll have to open up another window. And then we will have to post online a projected number of seats that we have at each grade level, at each, at each school for public viewing. So not that we're really going to do anything different, it's just going to be a little separated, but as you read this, just keep in mind that their definition of a transfer is what our definition of a zone exception is. And that gets a little confusing, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. But other than that, the other ones are just your general, just tweaks and revisions due to state law changing to keep us up to code.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Kelly regarding our school board policies? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve on first and second reading, school board policies as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to reports and information.
Okay. Monica's not with us tonight. She is out sick, so we'll start. Leanne, since you're on the end, we'll start with South Clinton. The new addition girl. She's got a new addition.
First thing on my list. So we're finally wrapping up construction. We are down to just a few little aesthetic things that they are fixing for us this last week, and I think we all were a little bit worried that it wasn't going to get finished, but it did. So it looks great. We got the certificate of occupancy for our new classrooms, so we've got people moving in those rooms. And we're especially excited that Lori Irwin is going to have her own technology lab this year instead of having to be in a closet in the library and work off a cart. And she is actually having the students go in the new room and help her design what they want their new tech lab to look like. So I'm excited to see what they come up with. We had a great sneak peek on August 3rd. We had a great turnout, lots of happy faces. I don't know who was happier, the staff or the kids, but I think we were just all happy to see each other and to welcome everybody in. And the parents were super excited about the new flooring and the new gym floor, and they're excited about the additions. So it was a good night. Our teachers are implementing what they learned at a training called Capturing Kids' Hearts before school started. They are really spending these first few days of school trying to build relationships with their kids, get to know their kids, and they're all building social contracts in their classrooms. So instead of having just a list of rules, the kids are actually having a hand in developing what they want their social contract to be in the classroom, and it's been fun watching them do that. Today, our last group of kindergarteners came for their first staggered day of school, and tomorrow they're going to find out which homeroom they're in. So we are super excited, and I'm trying to hurriedly learn all those new kindergarteners' names so that I'll know them when they come back next week. We're going to have our first assembly on August 26th at 1:00, and fall pictures are going to be on August 31st.
Thank you, Ms. Leanne.
Thank you.
All right. Jenna? Come fill us in on Clinton Elementary, who has new plumbing.
We are so excited.
There's nothing exciting, more exciting than new, new pipes in a school.
I know. I think Leanne also just read my whole school board report, so you may hear some of the same things. But we certainly want to thank members of the City of Clinton and ADFAC for our school supplies that they donated at the beginning of the year. The kids gets to, get to shop and pick out what they want out of the supplies, and so that's really important for those who didn't get to do so before school started. Our sneak peek was last Wednesday, and I just wanted to brag on all the wonderful feedback we received. The parents were excited, they were happy, the kids seemed happy to be back in school. And we joked on the first day of school, it was so calm and quiet last week. We said, "Parents just pulled up," and we'd never seen them drive so fast out of the parking lot before. But it did help ease their minds, so, so that was good. And then our teachers also participated in capturing kids' hearts, and we ended up doing a committee for capturing kids' hearts, and we're going to pace out the program so we make sure that all the teachers are using it in their rooms. But they're also doing social contracts. And today, we did norms for PLCs, and it was kind of, we talked about how we're kind of building our social contracts to also make that successful. So it's been good. Our new teachers are rocking and rolling. I want to brag on them. I've been going in their rooms just to observe, and they do not seem like new teachers. They just keep getting better and better. So we're excited to have them, and I wanted to thank Ms. Root for stepping up to help Ms. Kidwell with the New Teacher Academy. Our picture day is August the 22nd. RTI starts the 29th, and our first PTCC meeting is September the 8th at 3:15.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our principal reports.
All right. Our next school board meeting will be here, September the 8th, and we also will have the Fall District Meeting coming up, September the 27th. We'll plan a time to, to, Kelly, you driving the van?
I will drive the van.
You were driving the van, so we will, we'll do a roll call.
Depending on how many people go, we'll take the van, or we might take the Explorer.
All right. We will, we'll do a roll call and see who else is able to go on that through text or whatnot. And also, put in your calendars for our next school board retreat, Friday that is coming up. That was the 8th, wasn't it? Wasn't it, Kelly?
Yes.
8:00. That'll be at South Clinton, and we'll tour the new addition.
9th.
Is it the 9th?
Saturday, yeah, Friday the 9th.
Friday the 9th.
We'll start at 8:00.
Make sure I put that in right.
Before retired people get in.
Or hey, let's do 8:30 to give kids time to get in and for you to get your school started. Let's do 8:30.
8:30, okay.
Is that better, David?
No. I'll just be there when I get there.
There you go.
All right, let me change that real quick. All right.
The 8th is our school meeting, and the 9th is the retreat.
Yes.
All right. And that concludes reports and information. We'll move on into the director's report.
Okay. So you have the director's report in front of you. As the principals have said, we have gotten off to a great start to the school, school year. I think after the first two years and dealing with COVID and just all the uncertainty and uneasiness, this year just feels like a refreshing, a refreshing time. It just, we've gotten a smooth start. Everybody is positive, everybody's on track, and it has just really, really been an amazing week. As of today, our enrollment, we will fluctuate, so this could fluctuate several numbers either way at this point being so early in the year. But we are at 958 students, K through 6. If you add in our pre-K, that takes us to 988. The reason that this number is so important is if you look at the K through 6 at 958 with our new TESA formula coming up, as long as we stay under 1,000 students, and we will continue to get that small district stoppant, which is a significant amount of money. So we're, we're watching those numbers, and, and I foresee that we collaboratively are going to need to probably hold some conversations about our transfer policy and how we do transfers in the future. But that number is up. To give you perspective, we ended the year at about 930 last year, so, so we're up some pretty good numbers, which is, which is a good thing. As you know, the CES plumbing project has wrapped up. I do have to give a shout out for our maintenance crew this summer. Sometimes I think Scott Ray and I can think a little high in the sky and just think we can accomplish all kinds of things, but we almost bit off more than we could chew this summer, I'm just going to say. But we were able to finish, or they were able to finish the plumbing project and still managed to get the rooms open. We weren't able to open up classrooms to teachers as early this year as we normally do, but they were very flexible and very positive about that and understood why. As Leanne said, Wright's Construction is still on site finishing of the punch list of items in the, in the new wing, but that is going well. So I wanted to talk a little bit, the two biggest topics I wanted to let you all know that you may hear a little bit about from our community and parents, is that T-VOS is going to be unembargoed on August the 15th. And I wanted to give just a little bit of context between, it is not that we did poorly, we'll be able to announce that very soon, but we did experience what we are calling an upside-down year. And I wanted to explain this to you just in case you need to explain it to someone else. So the T-VOS system is our student growth system that basically compares how a student in Clinton City schools grows compared to students across the state of Tennessee. So if we look historically about what happened with COVID, in the year, we shut down schools in 2020. So nobody was in school the last nine weeks of 2020. Then that next year was the year that Metro Nashville and Shelby went virtual for the entire year. You had other districts across the state that did the hybrid model where they would go three days and then two days virtual. School districts were doing everything. We stayed in school. So we continued in-person learning, and we know now from experience that students learn and achieve more in in-person learning through virtual learning. So our kids greatly benefited during the school year of '20 and '21 because so many schools across the state were closed. Shelby County and Metro Nashville make up about 25% to 30% of the student population across the state. So they have a big sway on the way things that happen across the state. So that year, when value added is calculated, we were being measured against the growth across the state. So by golly, we rocked the house because we were in school. So our growth that year was almost somewhat inflated because we knew our kids were going to grow more than kids who sat home and did virtual for a year. So then this past year, in '21, '22, all those kids came back to school. We continued what we had already been doing. So our kids continued to make great growth. You had 30% of your kids, and more so than that because a lot of your West Tennessee districts didn't go, all the kids went back to school. And so it was almost like a slingshot, like they had been held back for a year, and then you put them back in school, and so they had easier time making growth because they hadn't been in school for a year. So when you compare our district compared to how kids did across the state, you had 30% to 40% of the kids that were rebounding from a year of staying at home. So what you have seen, not in all instances, but in some systems, you have just seen that flip-flop to where if they had a really, really high value added in 2021, it dropped. And then flip side, if they had a really, really low value added in 2021, they're walking away with high scores this year. It just kind of reversed and did the upside-down. But the crazy thing about it is, is that we have seen in isolated instances, and overall we still did well. But in isolated instances, we see teachers that made the exact same gains with some of their kids that they did the prior year, but they dropped three and four points on value added. And so we, Jamie and I have had lots of conversations about this, and we're going to celebrate the successes, but in our opinion, the data is not as, the data is only as good as the formula and the data you put into the formula. And this is, I mean, it was a pandemic, it was a crazy year. It's not that the formula is broken, the formula is a good formula, but the data was wonky that we were putting into the formula for two years. So we know that if a teacher actually scored a five this year, by golly, she was five on steroids because it was super duper hard to get a five this year. But we also know that some of our teachers that may have walked away with a two or a three could have very well made the exact same gains this year that she did last year, or possibly even more gains, but when you compare it across the state, it just didn't make the cut. Does that make sense? That's extremely hard to describe to a teacher who has worked their, you know, they've worked themselves silly. And so we, you know, because it affects your level of effectiveness, it affects your evaluations, and so you're not going to hear us talk a great deal about value added this year because I can't look at a teacher and talk about a level two when I know that she has made the exact same, if not more, gains than she did the week before. It is just that the data put into the system was a little different. So we will celebrate the successes, but we are certainly just going to take that as a grain of salt of why the data leaned the way that it, that it leaned. Our achievement was really, really good in most places. Jamie has been, as she calls it, her deep dive, she has been flapping with her nose and data for the past three days and discovering, you know, subgroups that we need to be working on and subgroups we need to celebrate. So she's still gleaning some stuff from it, but I want to put that in perspective for you. So any questions on that?
Are we going to see anybody be penalized for, if their number or their, their score went down?
Not from Clinton City schools. And then really, your level of effectiveness, where, where we, where we might see it impact would be with, depending on what you get for a level of effectiveness determines how many evaluations you get. So like a teacher, we, we always opt in in Clinton City schools that if you have a five in value added, that trumps your evaluations and everything, and you are a level-five teacher. We opt into that. So if you have a level-five teacher who dropped to a level-two, they'll lose the ability to do that with the state evaluation system. So that might knock them into a few more evaluations, which...
Is that on a three-year average?
No. Not the level of effectiveness, no. The other place that I, and I don't know if the state will ever do anything about this because this is a theory that statisticians are telling us that are directors that have degrees in statistics. I don't know that you're going to hear the state talk about this phenomena because they don't want to, I mean, they don't want to set up a belief that this, this formula doesn't work because it really does work. It's a good formula, it's just these were wonky years. So I don't foresee that they'll change anything but tenure. Tenure, if you're, if you have to be... that they'll change anything but tenure. Tenure, if you're, if you have to be a Level 4 or 5 for two consecutive years and work for five years for us to receive tenure. So I could possibly see that. I haven't looked to see if that would affect us or not, but there again, tenure buys you due process, and that's all tenure buys you. But it is a comfort for teachers, and that is a big honor for teachers. So we'll just kind of walk through, and I don't know what the state will decide. None of this information, though, just to be candid, is coming from the State Department. This is coming from director groups and professionals who know the value-added system and have been analyzing it, and it's pretty valid and true. Jamie's researched it and looked at the, looked at the protocols of T-VOS, and so, and there again, we, as Clinton City Schools, I think when we're able to share, I think it's not horrible. It really isn't. But we're going to see some areas that we're not used to. So any questions on that? Okay, and then the next big thing is just our third-grade retention law. That has gone into effect, and you all know that we advocated very hard to try to make some changes to that where we could look at a variety of different data points to make a decision about a kid, which unfortunately was not well received by the General Assembly. So this does go into effect this year, and basically, you probably will be asked by parents about this. We're going to try to do a lot of proactive communication. Our goal in Clinton City Schools is to not retain anyone. We want to give supports that would allow them to go on to fourth grade, and that is our goal, and that's what we're committed to. We're going to need parents to be committed to the same thing because there are certain criteria that you have to do if you are not on track or mastered on the third-grade TCAP. So the way it will work is if a third grader takes TCAP at the end of third grade and the score comes back as you are approaching expectations. So there's four categories. You've got below expectations, approaching expectations, at expectations, and exceeding. Is that correct, Jamie? And they change them every few years. So if you are approaching, the parent will have the option that the child has to attend four weeks of summer school and make significant progress, or agree to be in high dosage, low ratio tutoring for the entire fourth-grade year. So that would be our all-core tutoring that we're doing. It's a 1 to 3 ratio, 45 minutes a day during the school day or after the school. So it's one or the other if you are in approaching. If the test score comes back and you are below expectations, which is the bottom one, the parent has to agree to go to four weeks of summer school and the year-long tutoring in fourth grade to be promoted. And the summer school, you have to attend 90% attendance, or it doesn't count. So there are ways, and I think what the legislators will tell you is that they want those supports to happen. But I think we're going to run into some situations where families aren't able to do summer school, or for whatever reason, we're going to, I don't want this to catch families off guard, and we have to be very proactive in informing families if their child falls into this category. So Jamie and I are going to hold a parent meeting the Tuesday after Labor Day, which is the 6th, September the 6th, and we are going to explain and walk parents through what this law states. It is not optional for us to participate or not. We are not able to look at anything other than the TCAP score. We fought and we lost. A parent can appeal to the State Department. They cannot appeal to us. We have not been given permission to appeal any of those decisions at the district level. It can only be approved by the Department of Education at the state level. They have not worked out an appeals process at this time. They are still trying to work that out. We will make that appeals process available to all of our parents, but we cannot make the appeal on behalf of the student. The parent has to be the one that makes the appeal to the State Department. So we are going to hold a parent meeting and invite all of our third-grade parents to attend. We also plan to do a video that we will put on our website that will walk parents through this. Then we are looking at second grade, end-of-the-year data and beginning-of-the-year universal screener for our existing third graders, and if any of those kids are at the at-risk category of falling into this, we are going to send home notifications to parents along with the data that we are using to say that they are at risk. Those kids, we will, they'll participate in 45 minutes of tutoring during the course of their third-grade year to try to get them back up to on-track. And then we'll do another round of communication to parents after our mid-year data comes out. We will go ahead and proactively enroll all of those kids in our summer programming because we would rather enroll more kids and have kids prepared to come and arranged to come. And then if their TCAP scores happens to come back as on-track, great, they don't have to come. They can, they want to. So we are going to try everything in our power to work with parents and to be as proactive as we can on this, but that is, that is where we stand with the, with the third-grade retention law.
Can you let your parents know we didn't have anything to do with this?
Oh, yes.
Come on, you talk about the phone calls.
Yep.
And I've already got.
Yeah. Well, we, we actually, on the first letter that is in draft right now, because districts frankly did not have any input into this decision, and I'm not being negative, I'm just telling the truth. And we have advocated for more pieces of data to be used. I mean, they're eight years old, and we're going to use one piece of data to determine this. And when we have benchmark data, we've got universal screener data, we have tons of data in Clinton City Schools where we could create a portfolio to see if, if they need to. All of that was, was not, was not voted on by the General Assembly. It was turned down. And so at the end of our letter, I have made it clear that we are required by Clinton City Schools to follow state law, and if they have questions about the state law, and I have put our two representatives' contacts at the bottom so that they can express concern as a constituent to the people who made those decisions, not in a negative way, just this was really out of your all's control, it's out of our control. These two individuals were for it, and so if parents want to express concern over that, then it needs to go to the person who made the decision.
And it did not exclude kids who have an IEP or 504 or who just are...
It did. It does exclude, IEP can be an exception, and ELL can be an exception.
Okay.
Some 504s, but just because you have a 504 does not mean that you would be excluded. It would have to be a 504 that would in some way impact, you know, someone with asthma. No, it would not.
Right.
But if it was some sort of learning, 504 that could impact your ability to learn, then that can be considered.
So like Jack, for example?
Correct.
Right.
What happens to a parent if they just flat-out refuse to do this?
They're retained.
Automatically.
Automatically. They would be retained in third grade, and because school board policy states that the school determines grade level, the parent would not have a right to appeal that.
And North Carolina has something similar to this. My brother lost four weeks of summer custody of his daughter coming from North Carolina to him because she had to complete something similar to this. So that's something else to think about, the custody arrangements with the parents who were out of state or...
Well, and that's where I say some parents aren't going to be able to, it's not going to be feasible for them to do both. And then they're going to, unless they can appeal to the state and win, then ultimately, the final decision will lay with the Department of Education. We also advocated to let the appeals process land on the Director of Schools because we know the child, we know the child's background, we know the situation, and we've got the full, complete picture of not only academics but social and emotional, what a retention would do to this child socially and emotionally. And that was also voted down, that we were not given the authority to do that at the school level, that it would have to be done at the Department of Ed.
And that's the biggest thing I've heard from parents. Why was that not put back to us, or you, or somebody within our school system here that knows the kids?
They don't know the kids at all.
That's been a big, that's been a big question. Why? And I told them, you fought for it, but we lost.
I fought hard for it. I fought hard for it.
And it's going to, it's going to be a hot item. I hope it goes smoothly, but good luck.
Well, we're just, we're going to...
It's going to be a mess. You're right.
The only approach that we can take is what we want to do anyways. We just want to help kids. I mean, we, just like everyone else, want all of our children to be on grade level, and we fight for that every single day. But the truth of the matter is, is the test that they are assessing this on is a standards-based test where 40% of it is on writing. So you're holding a retention conversation, you're getting me on a soapbox now, a 40, you're holding a conversation about retaining a kid on their reading level where there is no research that TCAP says a reading level, and 40% of it is on writing, which is not reading. Which is why, when we went down there, we fought so hard for, let's look at universal screeners. Let's look at, our universal screener is nothing but reading. It's the foundational pieces of reading. And they would, and then even more ironically, as we're walking through with the Department of Ed about how we implement this and educate parents, my question was, this is the first year our students have taken TCAP. Second grade is not a TCAP. It's a different kind of assessment. And I said, so they're eight years old, they walk in, it's the first time they're in a high-stakes testing. What data do you want us to use to warn parents that their kids might be at risk of this? And the department said, well, you've got your universal screener data. And I said, but the universal screener data wasn't good enough to use as an additional piece once TCAP comes in to use, but yet that's what you want me to use to try to warn parents that this may happen? So there's, there's lots of...
And they said what?
Huh?
What'd they say to them?
They don't have an answer.
Of course not.
They'll get back to you.
They don't have an answer. They don't have an answer for that.
We'll circle back.
Other than I can tell you that I have, I'm prob, it's a good thing that I answer to you all and not the department.
So you're on probation?
Because I have a feeling, I have a feeling I'm not on their Christmas list.
You're on probation.
But you know what? That's what we do. We advocate for kids. And I would be a firm believer, if I felt like that retention was a research-based, best-practice intervention, you would hear all of us. But look at Hattie's research. It's one of the worst things you can do to a kid. I mean, there are, there are certain instances where it is effective, but overall, it is not a research-based intervention. So that is why we have to get parents on board, that there is nothing that Clinton City Schools can do about this. It's a state law that a lot of reps around here voted for. And so, and so we've got to implement it. So the best thing is that they're going to have to agree to the summer school or the, or the fourth-grade tutoring, or both, so that we're able to promote. So it's going to be a definite partnership between us.
Are we going to have a backup plan to maybe, I know we can't make this mandatory for parents to come, but are we going to try, if some parents don't participate, maybe they can't come because of work?
There'll be a lot that won't come.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We got some way that...
Well, we're doing, we're going to do a face-to-face meeting. We're going to do a video that we'll put on social media, that we will put on websites, and then we're going to, actually, we're going to mail the letters instead of sending home with kids to ensure that parents actually get, because I know that, Lord have mercy, my children, they would come home and their little take-home folders would be a hot mess, and I may or may not get it. That's too important for us to not let parents get. So we'll be mailing that in the US Mail to make sure that they get.
What happens if a child is retained, takes the test again, is below average again?
They just get to move on then. When the intervention, when the intervention is not successful, we just move on.
Wow.
But no, are they still...
Sounds a lot fairer.
Now, in Clinton City Schools, would they continue to get interventions, and would we continue trying? Absolutely. We are, we're never going to give up on a kid. We are going to continue those interventions.
It sounds to me like, like, we obviously have the best intentions of, you know, at heart, but there may be a few schools scattered about who don't. So let's punish all of everyone for the sins of the few who are just letting kids kind of slide through, you know?
And I appreciate, I appreciate the fact that they want additional supports for kids. I'm not arguing that if a kid is not reading on grade level, they shouldn't be getting intervention. But we do that 45 minutes a day for every kid that is below grade level in Clinton City Schools. We have a framework in place where we do that. I am not so sure that the assessment that they are using, it is good information, but there is not one assessment that should ever define an eight-year-old kid. I'm sorry. They're just, I mean, that's why we do EZCBM. That's why we do IRADY. That's why we give pre-test and post-test and anecdotal notes, and, you know, we give a wide variety, and then you take all of those data points and put it together for a portfolio that tells a complete picture of a kid. One multiple-choice test is not going to give you 100% accuracy if a kid is reading on grade level or not. And to me, that is such a simple concept, and I'll argue it with anybody that wants to argue it, but it just fell upon deaf ears with our legislators. And then frankly, the department, their hands are tied. They have to implement what the, you know, what the legislator tells them to implement. So, I mean, their hands are somewhat tied as well. So, anyway, I could go on for hours about that, but you all probably like to enjoy your evening, so...
Good luck.
If you would like a private soapbox conversation, I'm always up for it. We will continue to take care of kids in Clinton City Schools. Any questions for me? I think I had two more items on there. ET, I do want you to know that Matt Almarad with Kona Ice showed up today and donated $250 to the Blaze Well-Rounded Program. He did a Blaze Well-Rounded night at the fair, and we got a portion of the proceeds. So I said I would wait until tonight to announce that so you could hear it.
All right. That concludes your report.
That concludes my report.
All right. Anything else? Hearing none, I'll declare this meeting adjourned.
Did you say it was the dumbest thing I've ever heard?